All right, I call this meeting in order, please rise. Sam, you want to have prayer?
Sure. The day and the fore once again coming before you tonight to say thank you for your love and mercy and grace as you make new force each and every day. Or to ask you to guide us, strengthen us, let your Holy Spirit have its way with us. Please forgive us what we say, or help us to draw forth together as community in the county. We ask all of us in Jesus' name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If not already done so, please sign in. All right, everybody's here except for Steve who's still out of state. Look over your minutes if you haven't already done so. Give you a few minutes, look over the minutes.
Only the three minutes.
Motion been made to approve the minutes as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. All right, financial reports.
Um, thank you to five of the city members for tonight that done their homework. I sent out an email to everybody and said that additional appropriations or transfers out of cycle. All five of these departments are sitting in here that I've heard from scares me that there might be others with additional appropriations, but it is too late unless the council calls. Doing good, we only have a few other funds that are going to be going grants and only one week corrections. They're still, they're down to thirty-eight thousand dollars, fifty-two hundred payroll clearing. Almost there on getting those corrections done, they will be done by the end of the year, it won't blow over in the red unless we're between payroll section. Most are good, we've been trying to look at the budgets and sending emails out to everybody at each of the funds and the line items. Insurances, workman's comp liability and those, I'm getting ready to have to make draws from EMS and the highway health department. Those that are not part of the county general fund, those six funds, so I will be taking pretty significant amounts out of their funds for those. That will get the line items that we're paying directly on, and then we'll get them back to the positive as well. So, I probably will not take all the highway or the EMS emails, we don't need them, they're as far as the adjustments goes. I'd rather leave the cash balances with those two as much as we can because we don't need it. We need to put the funds that were refunded, so, other than that.
And, uh, the jail housing, is that going to be re- rewarded?
That will be rewarded as well.
I don't know if this goes in line with that, but, you know, we had talked about putting... That there was three different funds that needed to go, I mean, those line items needed to go in one of the funds, of the...
The resolutions.
Yeah.
What, I was talking about, I got, I had it down under audit room, but...
Oh, okay.
You have your jail fund, your highway, which is later on a resolution that's there, and which is, we're, we're in projects, and then, um, there's one other, I didn't write it down. Those cash balances, they're in those specific funds and line items that you guys have set aside. If we don't move them on the December thirty-first, they're just in the cash balance and you would have to go back and reappropriate them again. So, we need to ask the attorney to do resolutions to move them. We've already created a jail fund, a jail project fund, as well as, again, there's a resolution to do the highway one tonight so that those funds will carry forward. Sam can explain it a little more when we get to that.
Okay.
But I want to make sure we're preserving those and they're not just in the cash balances. Again, the jail and eleven-seventy is the main one. We still have the storage unit funds that will revert over, that resolution is already done. That, it just will be done at the end of the year, it's easier to do them all at the end of the year, that way you catch the whole year of the deposits that are there. I believe the commissioners are going to confirm the storage units at their meeting on Thursday. So, that will, that'll decrease over the next several months as far as them wanting to close the storage units and, and, but whatever comes in, we will put in the jail fund because that's what the resolution said, so that was the big one.
Okay, yeah. Sounds good. All right, moving on to the Jennings Township twenty-twenty-six budget adoption. Someone want to make a motion?
I will move that we adopt and submit the Jennings Township budget.
Motion made by Anton, is there a second? Second by Daniel, any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. All right, let's see, I hereby open the public hearing for additional appropriation requests. Those should be in front of you.
So, this is the only, only add one, right, the riverboat is regular hearing?
The motion at the last meeting was up to twenty thousand dollars and that was for WIS for working on the county policies updates.
Any public comment?
I'm going to make a motion that we proceed in advertising, or proceed in approving the appropriation for twenty thousand dollars out of Riverboat for Widener, Irwin, Shield, for doing the personnel policy updates.
Motion made by Anton, is there a second? Second by Daniel. Any questions on that? All those in favor? Motion carried. I hereby close the public hearing. All right, old business jail project. Thank you for coming, Jeff.
Thank you all, appreciate the opportunity to be here. We have talked to new bond counsel at Frost Brown Todd and worked through some of the issues that we had talked about before. Structuring this as a property tax bond, but payable from income taxes as you liked. And it not being subject to all the property tax procedures because you have a reasonable expectation that you're actually going to make the debt services from income taxes. So, they have agreed to that structure, this building as the replacement asset for interest during the construction period, so we don't have to borrow that and capitalize it. They have provided a timeline and it was distributed at three fifteen today. One went to you, one to Sam, one to the auditor, the attorney, and a couple others. So, that's there for you to disseminate and look at. The timeline that we had talked about a month or so ago was they wanted to provide a guaranteed maximum price or the true cost of the project at the end of January. So, this pretty much follows that. So, for November, there will be a lot of activities between bond counsel and legal counsel and the commissioners. And us providing the parameters to get all those documents in place to start the lease procedure. And for the commissioners to hold public hearings on the lease, et cetera. Your function as the counsel, you'll have a hearing on additional appropriation and approving the bond ordinance in January. At that same point in time, we'll be going to get a bond rating. And where these come together is we should have a bond rating, the actual price of the project, all at the end of January. So, then we will resize it if it needs to come down in cost. Market it for the first couple weeks of February, sell it in the middle of February, it'll take bond counsel two weeks to close it. So, on her timeline, she's got you with cash on March third, which is the timeframe that we had talked about before. Do we know of any changes that, that timeline would be inaccurate at this point, or is that still our best guess?
I can't think of any, I mean...
Okay. The other thing for us to provide bond parameters to bond counsel for all the documentation is the last estimate we provided. Which was where we walked through the sources and uses at thirty-one and a half million. And it was based on that design, it had a four-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-dollar contingency. It had three million dollars included for water sewer ingress and egress from the site that you had selected. And it included what was believed to be a four-million-dollar cash contribution from the correctional facility lit fund. And of course, based on the amount that you've already approved for engineering, you know, that four million can be four million less the million-three-sixty or whatever that you approved. Those will wash now because if you spend it ahead of time and you only spend, send three million, then the cost down below would be three, would be a million dollars less. So, do we know of any changes to that, is that our best estimate at this point in time to go forward? Because when we set these parameters, that will be the maximum amount and it'll have to come in equal to or lesser than that. Or you'll have to trade, you know, expenses.
Is there any need or value to keeping it a little less than high? For example, the cash balance in the jail facility fund, you know, by the time January comes around, it's going to take over for, um, does that matter? You know, should, are we okay to just keep it where it's at?
Oh, okay. If you have a little bit of that, this is going to nail down the parameters of the borrowing.
Okay.
Because today we have it at, the part amount of the bonds would not exceed twenty-seven million, five-hundred thousand. That plus your four million gets you your thirty-one-five for all the project contingencies.
Yeah, so if we have four-point-five, then that's just to our good, we, we have extra flexibility with cash.
Correct.
That we can control at that point.
Yes, and because we are not in what's called a controlled project, um, it should not be a problem if you needed to put more cash into the project. Because there are certain thresholds where if we had to go through all the property tax procedures, if you were under the referenda amount. And then you needed or wanted to put in more cash, that would take it over, then you have to start the entire process over because it's the value of the project.
But fortunately...
Yours, the way we're doing it, um, that should not be a problem, having a little extra money for cushion should be fine.
And then you mentioned the resizing, and that's for an example, when we finally get down to some, some different bids and some numbers. If, let's say, the sewer part was five-hundred thousand less than we anticipated, then we would have resizing of that bond limitation by that amount, for example. Is that a good example to use?
Exactly, so today you're going to approve potentially twenty-seven million, five-hundred thousand. If we find out the project's five-hundred thousand dollars less, when you get that guaranteed maximum price at the end of January, then we would scale that down to twenty-seven million dollars and only sell twenty-seven million dollars of debt.
Okay.
So, therefore, you would only borrow what you need to meet your requirements for the project.
I want that number to be the lowest possible.
Yes, and that's why we, like I said, line these up all together so that when they give us the guaranteed maximum price, we'll be at that position where everything will have been approved at this higher amount. Then we can scale it down to exactly what you need and sell it, close it, have cash.
Great.
And interest rates are breaking, are to the good?
Uh, they continue to pace down.
Okay.
So, hopefully we'll get another one or two by the time we sell in mid-February.
Good.
But we will see.
It's not going to go up, so, I mean, yeah. It has been trending down, so that's good.
Trending down and all indications of the Fed is it's going to, can, that, continue to trend down more.
Sam, have you heard any different numbers on utilities?
Um, working with Commonwealth, um, they called, um, last, in the last week. And they're working on some different numbers where they think they might be able to help us. Then the lady on Commonwealth is looking at some grants courses as well. I should have enough big probably Joe in a couple of weeks, I'd say, I got a meeting with them and I got a meeting with the town council about this project. So, I said in a couple of weeks, I should know a little more about where it's going to be, right now we're at two million dollars. One-point-eight to two-point-two for the sewer. Just the sewer. Let's count the water.
Or the egress?
Yeah, the egress part, uh, on that road right there, it costs ten grand. That's, that's nothing.
I figured, more, I figured they'd have to put a bump out.
So, uh, it's, I don't know, I'm more concerned about the sewer right now than anything. They did call me back, said they have, they think there may be another way that they could go, which would save some money. But I told them, I, I know, I've been on the phone, showing them on paper. So, Drew from Commonwealth, uh, he's working on that and so is the, I can't think the latest name off the top of my head, in a couple of weeks, which I, 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 I assume it to be somewhat less than two million dollars. And I knew, oh, I had my thoughts out to the town council and, uh, we're just going to make face of it, that's the only way I can do business is straight face up, so that's, that's all I'm looking for.
Well, you know the goal is lower the cost, so, okay.
I think we'll be able to save, I, I really do think, well, I mean, if we can save, if there weren't a lot of, a lot of sewer project.
That would be awesome, it would be awesome.
If we can save the engineering fee, if I can get, I'm just not many guys in control, I'm just a messenger, but if we can get the engineering fee handled, I feel pretty good about it. Because it's expensive, everything's expensive, so, we'll know something.
Yeah, um, the, the other question I had was on the first two years in the plan. We were going to utilize some money that was already saved up in eleven-seventy. We had, I think, estimated, we had this year's earmark and we had last year's earmark, which puts us at a little over six-hundred thousand available that we could use towards current costs or upfront costs or whatever. Is it better for us to do the ordinance that transfers the money into the other jail fund? Or we better just to leave it where it's at and then when it's time to appropriate money, we can go to that and appropriate it?
The only important part is that you don't spend it on something else.
Well, definitely.
Yeah, you make the debt service payment in twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Okay, so whatever method we use, it doesn't matter, as long as it's...
Yeah, as long as you've identified it, everybody knows this amount we cannot spend in twenty-six and twenty-seven. Then you'll have that new lit regime in twenty-eight and you'll have different parameters.
I just want to make sure that we...
Yeah, and...
Don't lose sight of that.
Yeah, if you put it in its own bucket, that helps identify it, I think, for everybody.
Yeah, and that's where the ordinance, that's being worked on.
Talking about that, I mean, have we got the letter with the letterhead that we were going to send out to the, that would just would be Town of Spencer and the Town of Gosport, wouldn't it?
Something, one of Jeff and Tony were working on, wanted to go to the town.
Well, we were going to, I mean, said it to the...
Both towns.
Gosport and Spencer.
Gosport and Spencer.
But for safety.
Yeah, yeah.
But for safety, mom.
Yeah, it's good to give them a heads up. The other thing too is, and I, and this is disturbing because now we're going into session potentially early and all that. And of course, the legislators can change things and already we have a state senator saying, well, maybe we can pause the lit reform by one more year. Well, that really throws a monkey, would throw a monkey wrench in our plan, uh, because, you know, we're looking to utilize part of that new structure. So, again, that's far from the final outcome and whatever happens with the law, but we're going to have to do our part in speaking up to our legislators and say, look, we have a jail project.
That's what I was going to say.
We have to make those commitments.
Yeah, you gave us a set of parameters.
Correct.
I pursued those parameters to do this.
And, and if it means a special exception for county... And, and if it means a special exception for counties like us where we have a jail project commitment, a bond issue that has to be paid, we've got to have the ability to pay it. So, anyway, that's just the, that's the un, big unknown in all this.
Right. We need to stay on top of that and make sure we, like you said, you know, keep a feel on the, on the pulse and see the discussion that's going around, so...
Yeah, now, the, the good thing about any legislative changes that they would make to whatever the new lit structure is, the underlying security is truly property taxes today. So, if everything goes bad, gets turned upside down again, gets delayed, it can go on the property taxes so that bondholders will be paid, which brings down your interest costs. However, I know you don't want it on property taxes, you want paid from income.
Correct. And we don't have it on property tax to pay it anyway, you know, as far as the, we'd have to budget, we'd have to cut something to pay for that and reshuffle.
Well, it actually creates its own new levy.
Oh.
As debt service.
Okay, well...
So you wouldn't have to do that.
But then the taxpayer would pay more.
Right.
And it would put pressure on that, which would create more circuit breaker losses that we talked about.
Yeah.
And would drive up tax rates.
Right.
Which would potentially drive up also those S E A one homestead credits.
Yeah.
So, it would have a ripple effect.
Well, we want to avoid that. Yes, exactly. That's the last thing we would ever want to do.
Yeah.
And the last question I had, sorry to monopolize, but the land swap, that, is that, is that final? Are we done? What's, what's the scoop there?
Waiting on the deeds to be re-robed because we have to take the, the dump side, as I always call it, the dump side, all the problems. Deeds have to be re-robed.
So there is some, some title expert that is working on that?
They'll take care of that, yeah.
And at some point that's going to be done?
Yes.
And then they'll get recorded? Okay, and...
Survey's been done.
It, it's been surveyed.
Yeah, been surveyed. Only thing that has to be done and Alabama's doing that is topography. They have to do topography layout so they know exactly how the jail's going to sit. And they're, they're already on that that we're going to do. Once the deeds get re-robed and recorded, I say, spend the money.
Because we have a resolution here that is sort of the exchange. Is this for...
That's for the paper and the district.
Oh, okay, good. Okay. There you go. I see property and then I'm going...
No, that's all right.
All right, thank you for...
So is there anything that we, any action we have to do before January or January the first?
Not that I saw in that timeline.
Okay.
But you might consult your attorney as well.
Okay.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Guys, have any other questions?
Thank you.
Did you send out a clean or an updated summary that had, because remember, we paid off the nine-one-one loan, so that was in that chart and that's gone and...
Yeah, the last one you received had that...
Okay, just want to make sure we connected on that one.
Yeah, I did notice that in the audit report. So, yeah, that will be good, that it's gone and eliminated, makes things a little cleaner.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, thank you.
I think you'll look at your screens. This is what I'm talking about, getting the money moved out. So, we carried forward three hundred and four thousand dollars that was set aside. And they, they're down to two hundred and fifty-five. So they've already used some of that, three hundred and four thousand.
So...
We can't keep, we either made creative, separate line item, or we need to do, we need to get it out of there.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we move, move out the, it'd be six hundred and thirty thousand dollars of cash from eleven seventy that was earmarked for twenty-four and twenty-five into, it's, it would go to the fund, the project fund?
The new jail fund.
The new fund.
Which is ninety-one eighty-two, I believe, the...
Ninety-one eighty-two?
Ninety-one eighty-two.
Okay.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Dana?
Ninety-one eighty-one, I'm saying.
Okay, so, motion is corrected to fund ninety-one eighty-one.
Ninety-one eighty-one?
Yep.
Ninety-one eighty-two.
Ninety-one eighty-one.
Okay.
All right, is there any questions on that? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Who's that?
Yeah. Thank you. Do something to do.
Dana.
And again, your cash balance in that fund is three million eight hundred and sixty-one thousand three twenty-four, so, I mean, the six fifty is there, it's just what you carry forward in the carryover because it goes into line items with other expenditures unless you're watching it every day, so...
You're talking though, this, what Sean knows, twelve thirty-three.
It comes to me.
Right, yeah. There we go, yeah. And there's enough, there's enough cash there, it's just we want to make sure it doesn't get commingled.
Right, right.
Because that was the purpose.
Okay, I got a question. Anton said six thirty in his motion and then you just said sixty. Six thirty?
Six thirty, yeah, because we, it was three hundred and fifteen thousand times two, so, yeah. And so that'll be a resolution, it'll be in our next meeting? Is that what, is that what, what the next step is? Okay. And then the cash that's in twelve thirty-three, that's fine where it's at, there's nothing special we need to do there. It's already earmarked.
No, because it's already been taken out, but there was the maintenance that you're in the budgets and that's all you put for twenty twenty-six, too.
It's just going to sit there. Okay, great.
We had a jail committee meeting last Thursday, do you want to say anything more about that, Sam?
We're just, I think we're well on charge, but we got a meeting Thursday to either approve or disapprove the jail project. We have to either agree on selection on Thursday or it gets cut. Other than that, we're right on, right on board and Alabama's on board. They're doing well, getting stuff done. So, we'll be meeting with Commonwealth and the town council, try to get some prices reduced on the sewer project as well as with the water company. Met with, spoke with Mr. Winters about the road thing, situation getting that handled. We're, we're right on schedule, as long as other two, or at least one of the commissioners agree on Thursday to move forward. Look forward, if they don't agree to move forward, the project's dead.
You want to talk a little bit about the, the one and only RFPQ that we, that you received or just...
Yeah, people, people misunderstood, this is not a bid. It's RFP that we got sent to us. It's people's interest in wanting to build the jail. And we only received one, or really, it's a combination, Garmong and B W. They chose to join forces and work together, which I think is going to be the best efforts of the county. I'm not sure if, you know, nobody else submitted to us did this year, but we didn't enough. I did receive some nasty emails about how we cheated people out of this, this is, was a sold-out deal. That'll come to an open public meeting on Thursday, make sure those people get their seat. That's not the case. We did everything legal, binding.
And you said it was Garmong and, and Build B W. They teamed up, they're going to team up there.
They teamed up together, yeah. And I sent that to you guys.
Yes, I think I, yeah, I saw that. And, and so, but when it, there is at some point going to be an actual call for, for contractors, you know, to do all the different parts to this.
That comes next.
That's later, yeah.
Well, it's, it's going to be immediate. If we select B W, Garmong on Thursday...
Then they're going to run with, they're going to have the green light.
B W is the developer, Garmong's the contractor. And we're holding our feet to the fire and we discussed it in the jail committee meeting, which by the way, need another council member on jail committee meeting, or project. I like that too, it's, I just like that too. But if we select them on Thursday, B W will go straight to Alabama's, almost immediately. And they'll sit down and listen to the drawing and they'll sit down and scope it out and say, okay, we've got this, going to cost this, 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 and this, plus it has to incorporate the sewer project and all the other stuff.
Right.
And it has to be within what you said as the tag. I'm not going to say that at the public meeting, see what I'm saying?
Right.
That'll happen, once they come to them, then they'll come back to the commissioners and say, hey, it's going to cost us this amount of money to do this project. And we'll have to come to you. And I mean, we move forward with the project, but we got to make sure we're all in agreement.
Right. And that's what Jeff was talking about when, you know, in January, should know the, the total cost of the project and then...
Yeah, well, definitely, I, I hope we know by the end of the year, maybe. It kind of, I mean, we know what the numbers are plugged in right now for the sewer project and the water stuff. We know those kind of numbers, even though we, we're hoping they're high. But still, we need that cushion just in case, because if they're not high, I say it costs us two million dollars for sewer, half million dollars for the water, they're two and a half million dollars off that project. This other, plus the architect's fee, Garmong, B W's fees, you're going, you know, if the project would stay without any reduction of any costs, you got five million dollars you're going to spend right out of here every move, piece of wood.
Yeah, are they, are they giving a maximum it will cost?
Yeah, once, once we agree Thursday.
When they give their numbers, they say the maximum it would cost, right?
Yes, they tell us exactly, they're going to tell us exactly what's going to cost to do the project. And then we, we have to bring that to the council. The commissioner can go ahead and agree to do the project because we're bound. But we have to make sure that the money fits the project, you know what I'm saying? We're not going to say...
But I mean... Well, you're bound to our limit, I mean...
All the, all that bidding on the sewer and stuff, though, I mean, the sewer and stuff, they giving a maximum bid it would be?
Yeah, they, they have, they know it's going to cost one point eight to two point two for the sewer, they know that now. That'll be, they'll take all that into consideration. Then hopefully it comes in less so you have more money to foot towards the actual jail itself. But if you don't, that money comes right off that project, that jail right there. So if they come back, let's say they come back and say it's going to cost forty million dollars. It's just a wet number out there and we have to brace on it.
Definitely.
Because that's out of our limits, that's out of our bounds. Then we have to sit back, then we have to call timeout. Do, we meet with the sheriff, he reduces, or whatever he already may do to get that down to the limit. And one thing to the council, and I'm, I'm sure you understand that, you just need to know what your limit, we know what the, we talked about what the payment is per year. You need to make sure you're comfortable with what your payment. You know, you go, it's going to cost you what, whatever it is per year in twenty years, you know? And you dissect all your number stuff, make sure you're absolutely comfortable with the payment that you're going to make.
Yeah, I think that's forefront in our minds.
Very much.
And that's...
It's at the end of my comfort level, to be honest. I want it to be less.
Because, once, once you agree to say, okay, well, we're comfortable with this, you know, that's going to determine a lot for us to say, okay, well, they're comfortable with this for however many years it's going to cost. That's not something I want to discuss with, yet, at this time, because we don't know exactly. But once we get those numbers back at the end of the year, first of January, give us a note. And then sheriff's, you know, he may have to make some decisions, he may have to make some hard choices, saying this or this, or they may surprise us.
You never...
Say they can do it all for what we think.
Twenty, that'd be great. And, and so, back to the bids real quick, with there, at whatever point that there's going to be some kind of document that is put out there to the, publicly, that's advertised to say, we're, we're calling for all contractors, you know, and this is the work that needs to be done or the type of project.
Yeah.
I would like to have copy, copies of that or they need to be on the website, we need to promote that. There needs to be as much reach as possible out to any and all contractors that could possibly do that type of work to encourage them to participate and bid on it and, you know, especially locals.
And that's why, and they've, 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 I mean, they've communicated that.
That's the goal.
They've communicated that to, to everyone that that's...
And we made it perfectly clear, I mean, local contractors should have the option to bid on something.
And if you read that, if you read that RFP, it's in there.
Yes, oh yeah, I know, I just, I, what I'm getting at is I want, I want to make sure that I help promote that. I think any of us should...
Right.
We should share that information, we need to expand it at the reach as far and wide as possible. And so whatever we get to that point where those documents are ready to release, let's make sure we all have copies of those.
It'll all be, it'll all be...
Yeah.
But the one thing they understand, if they do not, I mean, they got to put it out to local contractors who, well, and if they, and that's the reason Garmong's watching over on the contractor's side, because for some reason, they choose not to select any local contractors, we're going to kill the project, get the water. If the local contractors have the right to be able to bid on the project, now whether they meet the certain criteria or not...
Yeah, they have to meet it.
That's fair, yeah, that's fair.
I want to make sure that the local contractor has the option to bid on the project, we don't want, we don't want that.
Who's in charge of setting the criteria?
We are, us and Garmong. They cannot approve anything until they come to the commissioners.
Are there any, I mean, like, state codes or whatever to, I mean, as far as, because like, you know, we've discussed before, a lot of, I mean, it's a very select few that are able to take on a project of that magnitude.
They have to meet certain departments, there's certain guidelines, that which staff is there, Garmong.
Insurance, bonding, the ability to procure the manpower.
Unless they're electrical, I'm sure that, you know, we got a great electrical company here, but when you do a project this size, it's not a three-man operation.
Yeah.
Right.
They have to meet the criteria, but if they meet the criteria, they will be selected. If they choose not to select them and they meet the criteria, they're troubled. But I, I'm not worried about that. Definitely, what we discussed, I think we're going to be good.
First step's the opportunity.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I, and I think that's clear here. We just need to do our part and help get that word out.
And promote it, social media, webpage, whatever they can be done, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the jail?
Did, did I hear that we're going to close the storage units?
Yes.
When are we doing that?
Well, we're going, I mean, first night is in closing, but end of the year, it's, it's, it's a mess. There's a lot of people that don't pay, won't pay, can't pay. We're sitting on a ton of merchandise down there that we don't need and we're not going to keep. There's, there's some people that do pay and stuff like that. Me personally, once, if this jail project kicks off, and I believe it's going to, I think everything's going to be great, you know, our opinion, we're going to have, we're going to have the property, the jail in its entirety appraised. And if the jail project kicks off, I want to know what that price is, but I thought...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
If it kicks off and they say they can build this jail in eighteen, twenty-four months, I think they can build at least easy in eighteen months, we'll sell the property.
Yep.
We have no alternative. I mean, we do, we, we, we have alternatives, but there is already a couple of people or a couple of businesses, no mention of names, asking not to, that they're out there at the door, give us a price.
And we're going to use the proceeds as our year twenty twenty-seven, you know, bond payment, you know, so we're going to need, we're going to need the cash.
So, we don't want to delay.
Yeah.
You interested in buying the storage unit? I'll say you know the property, but the storage units, it's time to, it's time to wash your hands with the storage units.
They've served their purpose.
They have, and then we brought some money in and stuff like that, and then there's people, and I understand, they can't afford, can't pay, a lot of people hasn't paid, the double loss, overlawed, there's never been one ounce of maintenance ever done.
No.
And it's, you know, I hate to say it, so I'm going to say it anyway, it is a shame that the county spent the money they spent on putting new roofs on those storage units. Anyway.
Thank you.
We'll have that money, hopefully, hopefully a good price.
If there is nothing more, we'll go on to... If there is nothing more, we'll go on to new business. Uh, additional appropriation requests and transfers are in front of you.
All right, so we have four total. We've got, and I'm just gonna go and make a motion, just to keep it simple. We have nine thousand from Fund forty-nine oh two, document fees. We have ten thousand for Fund eleven seventy. Nine thousand, county general, probation. And ten thousand, county general commissioners. Oh, is that all? Just four?
Okay.
Okay. And so the motion is to advertise those for our next meeting and final hearing.
Motion made by Anton, is there a second? Second by Daniel. Any questions on those?
Yeah, Mr. Z here, we prepared a sound, can you close it now?
So that...
Eleven seventy?
Yeah, that is sheriff-related, it's, uh, earlier in the year, they had some issues with deer.
Deer.
I'm surprised it's not happening now. With as many deer that are out there, but, and that may still be, or it may not be the only request, but, anyway, so that, that got, that line item got drained earlier than it should've, and we have to make that up for the end of the year, so. Per the sheriff.
Um, Sheriff Kido, motion...
Yes, yes. If there are no more questions...
Probation.
Are there any more questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the salary confirmation summaries and have the president sign those.
Motion made by Anton. Seconded by Joe. All those in favor? Motion carried. All right, elected officials and department head comments.
Yeah, in front. Lights are going on.
He jumped right in there.
A couple clarification questions, maybe, the, the copier line items, the agreements, is that a new contract going out? We made a review to make sure treasurer was copier, they're not on it, it used to be, and they should not be.
They're not.
They're not?
Possibly, they're on the new one.
And this is just the additional ones that were added, I believe, we were right about the new one, did you, did you want to, two or three new added, that those we made sure before the permission of signs, for the new contract?
I'll just behind the, behind the mountain.
So, just a couple more questions, the new wage study that came out, um, in sharing a, a part-time employee is brought to the forefront for me, uh, that seasonal employees are no longer an option. I am requesting that that possibility be brought back. One example came before me today. So, one of my employees lost her grandmother, she had to leave about noonish. I am now down to me, Ryan, and two part-time, which Anton and I have kinda danced around this, but didn't really question each other. My understanding was that, from Diane's into mine, that we had seasonal, we had a pool of hours, we had a pool of money. I could get as many helpers as I could for that amount in that time. Since the wage study happened in twenty-one, twenty-two, seasonal positions are no longer a classification here for own county. But I cannot work in our busiest times, fall is already proving to be a challenge after one day. I no longer can have two of my thirty-five hour week people, I'm down to twenty-nine and a half for two of them, so they're leaving Wednesday, half a day, half a day. I don't have anybody to work the windows, the mail, the phone, the balancing, the reconciling, I don't have enough hours in a day now. So I'm, I'm requesting that council reconsider and bring back a seasonal position or a classification for us. Because I can't, it's the first challenge, the first time that I've actually, ignorance is bliss, if you will, it's the first time I've actually had to deal with it, um, and learned that I cannot throw down over that twenty-nine and a half hours, whereas before I was working on more than that, and I was pulling from Dallas, those funds and that, that bunch of hours. That's all changed.
Yeah, so I guess I'm lost, I don't quite understand what the request is, 'cause we've not changed anything between this year and next year, other than we upped the rate of pay and we upped the number, we upped the budget number to account for that.
Right, which is why I say ignorance is bliss, because I did not realize when the first wage study came through in twenty-one, twenty-two, whatever you said, that first one.
Twenty-nine, well, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty.
Twenty, okay, when that first one came through, I did not realize that seasonal was no longer an option. Prior to that, my understanding is that it was.
I did.
There is no change to seasonal.
Yeah, I didn't know that they did away with seasonal.
So do we still have the seasonal classification? Because that's what I need, that's what we've always considered then.
Let's research this and follow back up with it by email. I wanna look at the policy, because I thought seasonal was defined in that already, and we've not changed it.
First, since the states, if you're thirty hours or less, or twenty-nine and a half hours or less, less is considered part-time, if you're thirty hours or more, you're considered full-time.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't know, and, and we are doing an update with the personnel policy, and that includes our definitions, and I, I, I do not foresee us changing a policy for two months when we've got a final policy that's gonna be updated. But, um, my, I thought if someone was temporarily working more than twenty-nine, from a benefits triggering standpoint, it was okay if it was temporary, like, it couldn't be for three month, four months.
I've heard that, yes.
But, yeah, but if someone is working it for two, two or three weeks, and they happen to be working forty hours, that's not, that doesn't trigger benefits. But is that true or not?
Right, as long as you, it's my understanding that as long as you make it up within a thirty day or, or that month, that they can go over that.
So we're good.
But trying to, my problem is I'm now sharing this, an employee with EMS, if that's right, I'm running this...
So they're already working more, ah, okay, yikes.
Do I, do I need to find, let that go to...
Yeah, I don't know how else to solve that, other than, yeah.
So, so they're working for EMS and, and you as well?
Yeah, and the total, how, I see where we're going with that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, the only way to fix it is not do that, because there's no way around, around that, that hours thing.
I guess that's why I need you to know if there was still a, a seasonal position that I can utilize and at my discretion use hours, I did that.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, right now, and, and the same for next year, we have in our structure, and I'm gonna open it up here and just go through that real quick, we have, under treasurer, we have part-time, it's called limited part-time, is the, the actual description, but you have a total of, this is for twenty twenty-six, you have, you have budgeted eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy bucks, or whatever, a pool of money for these people you bring in to help during tax collection. Now...
Can you set it at my discretion?
I mean, there's, it's up to you, as long as you don't exceed the more than whatever thirty-day, whatever the limits are of the wage stuff, the wage law stuff, then you're fine, but if you wanna work, at the moment, we have two positions that we've been tracking, 'cause you, you, you've had two people, and we just split them equally for our internal purposes, the total's still the total. But let's say you only wanted one person instead of two, if you can work one person for the appropriate number of hours and be compliant, that's up to you, as long as you don't exceed your budget amount.
And stuff could use uncompliant.
Well, and that's, that's out of our hands, it's, yeah, I'm talking the federal wage stuff, or whatever that is allowable. But we've budgeted a certain amount, and it's up to you to, to use it. But there's nothing that we need to change to change that.
Am I explaining that correctly as far as, okay, so I can still utilize her part-time for twenty-nine and a half hour weeks, or thirty-five hours a week, that I steal from EMS's time for that thirty days? Yes, okay.
So it sounds like we don't need to do anything on that.
So is it, is the employee like a secretary at the EMS, or are they on an ambulance?
EMS, Chris.
Okay, so he doesn't have a full-time secretary?
No.
Has he ever?
He has.
He has one.
He just downsized it.
Yeah, it was his decision to downsize it.
Or you could just give her another full-time person and it would...
Yeah.
They're bad.
That's pretty costly, but yes, you're right. But yes, the seasonal's still there, I mean, I generically call it seasonal, because it is, but, but it's called limited part-time, that's the, uh, status definition, and you're already good to go, we budgeted the amount, we upped the pay, I mean, it's, you just gotta...
I need to know if I lose, I lost the classification.
How, how many full-time employees do you have?
I have two full-time and two part-time, or seasonal.
And one of those full-time is your chief deputy?
Yes.
But yeah, you're good to go.
Okay, cool, I'll worry about that twenty-nine and a half hours. Do you wanna jump in on that one, while you're there?
Yeah, because we have elections, and it's, it's, it says part-time on the budget line. So, I've got people during the day, when we have early voting, and that person will get over twenty-nine...
Same thing, it's a pool, up to you, you gotta manage it, yeah. For more than so many weeks, or whatever that cutoff is, but, yeah.
Um, my last question is on the, the new wage study that's coming in, you guys have talked about moving chief deputies to, I'm, I'm asking...
Excluded, yeah, and that's on hold pending the personnel policy project.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't as of the January one.
Nope, nope, we're gonna keep things the way they are, uh, the only thing that's changing on that is there's some category classifications for some positions that are, you know, instead of a C, a D, and that kinda thing. But, uh, as far as changing the FLSA status line, which is non-exempt and exempt, for, which is most of our thinking for the last several years, the addition of a third excluded is on hold until we get the personnel policy figured out and get that part done. But there's, I will caution, there's probably not gonna be much avoiding that, because it is defined by federal law, we're gonna have to classify positions the way they need to be classified. But, so, it'll take some getting used to, or some review, maybe, I don't know, training, but some kinda, maybe WIS will have to come in and explain it specifically to the department heads that, that have positions that are affected by that, just so there's a greater understanding of it, but, um, it is what it is, it's just something new and a little unknown to us, because we've never seen it before, so. We're in the same boat as you, but we gotta do the correct thing per the law, so, yeah.
I need to fly out.
Good question, though, good question, yeah.
Did you forget what you were gonna say, Sam?
Yeah, well, I have some doubts. A little tired today. You have a resolution in front of you that allows the county commissioners, we're gonna sell, we're out of paving business, chip and seal business, so we're selling quite a bit of equipment, and that money, we'd like to take that money and put it into the fund, or line out in Sheila, the fund, uh, that's gonna be strictly for roadwork, nothing else, either paving, chip and sealing, or, you know, culverts and stuff like that, it's not going, it's only strictly going to roads, we're not buying equipment, materials, anything like that.
You guys have a, a plan for that money, like, is it earmarked yet, or is it just gonna sit there on hold until...
It's gonna sit there, we're gonna put that on hold until we see what the state does with our budget, with that money, if we get from the state, it's gonna go into the same fund. Then, we're gonna go after the roads that we have scheduled.
Shelley, that money that, he's talking about on sale, does that immediately go into some sort of investment? Is there a way to do that?
I can, if he wants me to tie it up for seven and a half months, yes.
No.
I think it's one of those, if they create a project, okay, we got...
And then it's there and ready to go.
Thirty thousand here, and it's there, and they can go, we can pay for it out of the unappropriated line item, so it doesn't have to come back, but it is strictly, and that's with the resolution and, and moving and creating a fund, lets them proceed with doing stuff, but yet not having to wait a month to come to council and additional appropriation in that process, which is, but if they should, we can put that in a resolution for the creating a new fund. The resolution you have tonight is creating the fund to be able to get the money from the other county to pay off, um, the, the current loan on the one truck, and then they've sold the paper as well, so that will be what starts it out in the beginning.
So the resolution that's in front of us is just the deal with the other county, but there still will need to be a resolution creating a new fund, which earmarks where the proceeds go. And I, I, I'm, you'll need to kinda massage through that later. I mean, to me, if, if our highway department is still on the tail end of getting caught up on some of the financial issues, um, and we know that those cash balances are, are very thin, or supposedly still thin, I mean, I would feel much more comfortable that, why wouldn't these go into the unrestricted fund of MVH and help that cash balance, where you still have line items for doing roadwork, you know, that you can still use, versus separating it out, I guess, would be that.
Sheila, did you say that that would...
And that's just a general question, I, I don't know what the right answer is, but I, that's my, one of my concerns, is why create a separate fund, just put the proceeds in the cash?
Yeah, that's how, you have to understand, that separate fund is strictly for roads. We, we discussed this for a year now, we've got, we're not in the paving business, we're not chip and seal business, we can contract stuff out cheaper than we can do it on our own, but it's gonna take an arsenal of money to take care of these roads, so we're trying to accumulate every bit that we can, I believe we have enough money in our cash balances against the end of the year, I, I...
On the eleven seventy-three and seventy-six?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not even, I'm not even concerned, I think we'll be just fine. So we wanna take that pot of money, then whatever we're gonna get from the state, and put it in this fund solely for roadwork only, because we've told, we've told the taxpayer, we don't pay and chip and seal any roads until we get the culverts in and the discs put in, that with the money, and Dave's not here, but he allocated, or he's working on the, the transfer of this one, the sale of this, that enough money right there, we can do two short roads.
From this proceeds, yeah.
That proceeds right there, we got two short roads.
You just contract it out and...
We contract, I'd be done with it.
But then the money's gone, the fund is back to zero, so, it's kind of a one and done thing, but I, I see where you're going with it, you want the accountability, you want it separate, but you could also put it into the cash and then approve a project from the cash out of eleven...
We could, but there's, there's...
But it, yeah.
You said, you said, just put it in that fund, then that accountability's gonna be to that fund, and it'll be documentation.
I think it's just like we just move, move money for the jail project, so we always spend it on something else, you know, we wanna make sure this still gets paid on some...
We just wanna make sure...
And that's valid, that's valid.
It's for roads only, only, don't wanna get used for something else, you know about, that's not only happening. We have that money in that fund, no funds can be spent from County Highway right now unless it's for government measures, that's it.
Um, Sheriff, do we need a motion on that, uh, resolution?
For the sales, like, change of the equipment?
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented, I have one number, what is it?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Nick, seconded by Anton.
I'll have, I'll do, you have it all pinned, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's okay.
It'll be twenty twenty-five something. Okay. I seconded that.
Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Motion carried.
I think we're going to come out a little better on that truck than we anticipated.
Well, thank you, yeah, that's great.
Reduction of the industry, saving that.
Terrific.
And I know they, they, the county took it to the council, and they have to come back to their second meeting to get them, which should be happening next week.
And you'll go ahead and have that other resolution drafted for our December meeting, so we can get on top of that.
Yeah, I've heard that Sam's going to do it. I'll send an email to Tony with all the resolutions that we know we need for
Yep.
These two funds, and now we're adding that one.
Yeah.
Um, and then as well for this, so.
Appreciate the work on that.
It, it, it's, it's not very good. I'm, I'm very thoughtful.
Any other elected official or department heads?
I do, um, so I know when we were here last time, or when I was here with Matt last time, he mentioned the pay matrix for longevity for dispatch. And I need to meet with somebody to see if we can get that implemented or worked on.
Yeah, that would be me, uh, and I was waiting to hear from someone, because I know you guys were interested, but not heard a thing. So yes, if you want to start that project, um, we can start taking a look at it and go from there.
That sounds good, so I'll just send you an email tomorrow, and maybe we can get a time set up for me.
Yeah, yeah, you can copy Polly on that if you could.
That one.
I think I clarified, Doug. Yes, we can, yes. Um, the resolutions and everything from the board of finance meeting in January allows me to do so. I have parameters on where I can do the investments, but if they fall into the white form, yes.
Is usually a minimum of seven months?
Most of them that I've been dealing with lately is seven months, yeah. But I will look into that and try to get you an answer.
What kind of rate have you been getting lately?
Uh, my highest one right now is four point three. Owen County State Bank's the highest in the county at the moment, but, uh, I put all of our, most of our investments in with Crane when they were four point seven five. And then I reviewed those, so, uh, by the end of this year, you'll have over a million dollars in investment money.
Fantastic.
I know where you're at.
Sell some more stuff out there, let's put a pig back. Five years.
That's the worst, I don't know. Let's say we give you four million from the state. We can invest two million pretty quick on a short-term note.
Usually at the end of
I don't know what, two million dollars at four point?
About eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I don't want to burst your, your bubble again, but back to reality here, because people are tuning in and they're hearing things, but my confidence level in, in us getting that is zero, point zero 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 zero. Yeah, I heard the if, but yeah.
It's a public here, the if.
Yeah, if.
Clear what we had from the county.
It'd be wonderful, but, yeah.
I'm, well, I'd rather be boss than sit around and be neck.
Yes. And, you know, we talked earlier about the jail project and being on top of legislation. We have to do the same thing for roads and road funding. We have to be lobbying state legislators and having them change the formulas that distribute, distribute money to rural counties, uh, and beat that drum constantly. Their legislative breakfast will begin in January. That is, we should all be there and ask these questions of those legislators.
Yep.
You know, road money, roads, roads, roads.
What can we talk on the December meeting?
Yeah.
The measures. Upstate.
All right.
So public, you can now get a dime. The public will make you four million dollars. It'll be between zero and four million.
Sheila, do you have anything?
I do. Um, first of all, open for all day here on County Insurance is
Wednesday.
See here all day, or you can go to EMS, it's there on Thursday, whichever is easiest. If you want to get signed up, you can do it online as well. Um, the other thing is, I want to reaffirm that I can do all transfers, whether it's same series or out of series between now and your December meeting, so that at your December meeting, we can provide you a list with everything. I can't wait until the end of December.
We did give that authorization, so.
And our seventeen eighty-two could possibly be back before Thanksgiving.
Ah.
Okay.
Talked with them today, and I'm hopeful. If not, early December, definitely, so. If there's any changes again, if we, we have a temporary meeting scheduled, if we don't need it, we'll, we'll let you know, um, but we'll
Well, we do have our normal December meeting.
You do.
And, you know, if you can just communicate with them, with, with the date.
Yes.
Because ideally, if they can release that
Can I get those to them today?
First part of December or whatever, then.
Or what, so when is our meeting in December? Is it the ninth?
The eighth.
Eighth. Yeah, so if they were to, because it's ten days, so they could technically, November twenty-ninth or whatever, they could release that. And we'd still be compliant to accept whatever updates are going to be.
I'd hate to, I, I want to avoid having a separate meeting if we do, so, yeah.
Council comments. Anyone have a comment?
Can we have heat in our next meeting?
Yeah.
Make a motion in the adjournments for council, nothing to say sometimes.
All right.
Thank you all for coming tonight.